County who will add the additional burglary. And then Marion County has the stabbing incident in their area. So just wanted to let you know or be aware. We reached out to Tiger High School in case, even though the school was not in session. We wanted to share in case parents, students inquired about it. So reached out to the homeowner just to see if they were okay. And I've only been able to leave a message. But again, totally random as far as anything related to Tiger. And that has been resolved. Moving on to the dashboard. I've highlighted a couple of the snapshots. I think Mike will display for you. Thank you. Again, we're still seeing an increased uptick in what is called burglary other. And that is our storage units. So we have seen a dramatic uptick on those burglary storage units. Also, we're still seeing an increase in our stolen vehicles. But more importantly, I wanted to point out, as you can see in the middle, is we're still experiencing catalytic converter thefts. We were up to 15 last month and you can see the trend going upward. And this is not unusual all across the state. They're experiencing this. And if you are not aware, there is a proposed legislation to make some changes. That's Senate Bill eight zero three, trying to make it a little more difficult for scrap metal not to take, purchase, or receive catalytic converters. And so there is a big campaign to try and squeal chat. And it's very costly to vehicle owners when that happens to them. And then, as you can see, our calls for service, both dispatch and self initiated are increasing. The March 2020, we were just starting into that COVID time. So calls were starting to go down. So was self initiated as we were trying to be diligent in minimizing our contacts. We are able to now with proper PPE to make those contacts and we're starting to engage. And now calls for service, I think, as we get back to a little bit of normal is ticking up. I was hoping to have a fourth month of saying that our photo enforcement efforts were going down and that behavior was changing, only to find that we've had an uptick this month. And I would believe that it is due to the fact that more people are traveling down 99, maybe on vacation, maybe getting back to work. Because we've certainly seen more vehicle traffic and therefore that has increased. Next slide, please. And as we get closer to the levy, I always want to keep you updated on our efforts there. Again, this is March, so it shows that we've hired nine out of our eight for our sworn. But in fact, I can tell you that we have hired the eighth person who will start on May 3rd. And that is a lateral officer from Capitol Police. And so we will have eight for eight. And then we have a conditional offer for the officer that would fill the position. That would be vacated by an SRO moving fall as a levy SRO position. And we are in backgrounds for our non sworn first with property and evidence, and then we'll move to the records division. So it's moving quite nicely. And again, we will be tracking our district integrity as we've told the voters that we were, our goal is to have an officer in every district, which we have five. And so we've been tracking this early on to show where we're at right now. And you can see like on day shift, 58% of the time in the month, we did have five officers. Swing shift, a little bit better at 74% and graveyard's 35%. And we hope to see those numbers increase, especially we're focusing on July when we hope to raise our minimum staffing up one and really start reporting our progress. The internal levy team will be meeting to look at how we want to communicate on the levy page to the community on that starting. We'll have that meeting this month. And that is my report out and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chief. Any members of the council have questions or comments for the chief? Counselor Newton?
Yeah, thanks for that great report, Chief. I just wonder often our great team, our police officers have tips for our constituents based on things they're seeing. Anything we can suggest to folks with this increase in crime robberies or burglaries on storage units? Are they seeing anything that, or is it just something that's just kind of prevalent right now? Do anybody have any thoughts on how we might help people avoid that?
Well, on the storage facilities, and they can happen late at night if they're not, you know, frequent. And so just we are working, the commercial crimes unit is working with the property owners on that to be a little more diligent. So we are communicating. We've done extensive outreach on the catalytic converters, suggestions on what to do. Unfortunately, any locks that can go on there with the tools that they use can be cut off just as quickly as they take the converter off. We've made some arrests, but as you know, those are just citations. There's no taking them to jail at this point in time. Portland did have an individual they arrested for the catalytic converter thefts. And he admitted to at least one that he conducted in Tiger. But again, they also, as a site and release. So with the property crimes, we're just seeing, releasing them on citations is not a deterrent. And that is probably our biggest challenge. But yes, we are communicating with the business owners.
Counselor Goodhouse?
Yes, two questions. One, and maybe this might be wrong, but on the catalytic converters, I thought I saw something a while back that a solution was to do some kind of paint on them or paint them some bright orange paint that that way could it be used for scrap metal? Is that even a thing that exists or not? Rather than the lock, but they can paint it so it can't be used. And then also someone could see it bright under there and they wouldn't even try to steal it?
That I have not heard, but you know, as far as if it alters the valuable metals that are inside is what they're after. And that's what the scrap metal people are doing. What they've offered before is to engrave them to an identifying number. And again, whether people have the tools to be able to engrave it or mark it, it's like many other things. Then if you go to, or if somebody's in possession, you will be able to identify it. But I had not heard about painting it orange at all.
And second question, I brought this up with the city manager on 101, but I thought I'd just bring it up now since you're here. I've heard from some people and especially even guy go to Walgreens there on McDonald and 99. But late at night, there's a lot of high speed cars are going through the area, almost either people racing or just going through there at extreme speeds. So I don't know if that's something that can be taken note of or looked at or something. But it seems like whenever I go in there and employees talk about how they hear or see cars going through fast. I think even a month or two ago that one hit one of the bus stands or something. But or maybe someone going at high speed or something happened. But I just thought I'd bring that concern forward and see if that's something that at least can be addressed. But it's probably hard to address when this may be done at all kinds of hours or different times.
Well, it's always good. And when you have people addressing that concern, if they want to go to the Tiger traffic app, we do monitor that. I will share with you that if you recall, it has been almost a year ago. You approved through the photo enforcement funds to have a evening DUI traffic car. And finally, our staffing is getting to the point where we selected an officer and we hope to have him doing that starting in July. And that's definitely something he can focus because he'll be focusing a lot around the 99 and those corridors. We have in the past had issues with the vacant lot on the cinema where street racers would gather and then, you know, hit high speeds. And we've had to disperse them at times. And so it doesn't surprise me perhaps that they've moved to McDonald. But I'll definitely relay that to the graveyard officers. Thank you.
I appreciate that. What's the, oh, sorry. And what's the chance in the future to put a red light cameras at the intersection or do a study? That one always just gets a lot of people running that light. And if you kind of get that big gap in there, I just wonder what the possibilities of looking at that in the future?
Historically, we've looked at accidents and I don't believe that was on our radar. I think it was maybe a fourth or fifth location, but I'll follow up and be able to report out on what the statistics are. I do remember we did look at McDonald Inquire about it. And I think it was a little bit down off of the list.
Counselor Shaw?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to commend Chief, you and your staff in communications. I know a number of folks in the community have said that they're being very careful about where they park their cars and have catalytic converters. And so the message has gone out and just wanted to say thank you.
I do appreciate that and I will share that with our folks. Thank you.
All right, anything else or we will move on to our next report out from the Tiger High School envoy?
I'm just going to say congratulations, Chief, on four year anniversary.
Thank you very much. The time has flown, honestly. And thank you, Tiger. You've kept it very interesting.
We're trying.
I think that's putting it mildly, isn't it? The last four years?
All right, do we have our student envoy Caroline with us?
Hi, I'm actually in the high school right now.
Awesome.
So we have a couple of updates from March. We had a student council meeting. We did a cooking on call where students just got onto like a Google meet and everyone made blueberry muffins together. And then we did a blanket drive for stud club, which is stop Tiger underage drinking and drug use. We held like a Tiger Madness slash March Madness bracket tournament. And then we had a Bob Ross painting night. So those are all the like fun events that we did in March. And then in April, we just finished Amazing Race, which is like a two week long event where teams complete like challenges and then service projects. So we had one team, the winning team that made 200 cat toys that they donated to the Oregon Humane Society. And then another team collected almost 100 items of clothing to donate to our local caring closet. We had our last football game of the season on Friday and we got to have like a couple of student spectators and parents there, which was really fun. And then we had our band cheer and dance teams there. So we won like 47 to 28 against Clackamas. So that was good for our last slash first football game of the season. Yesterday, we just had our staff breakfast. So leadership kids like went around on carts and served breakfast to teachers for their class, like right out front of, right outside of their classroom. It was a lot different than like it would obviously usually look like, but it was really fun. And I personally was really happy that I got to see all my teachers again. So that was good. And then our Tiger Sparrow Club, we adopted our sparrow in like the second week of March. Her name's Charlie and we've been raising money for her through completing community service vouchers. And since the second week of March, we've raised $1,500 so far. And then we have our leadership elections coming up. So our next ASB president and vice president will be selected like in early May. So possibly by the next time I'm here, there will be my replacement for the next year will be selected. So that's exciting. And then the last thing is that hybrid learning is starting next week on April 19th. And some of myself and a couple of other leadership students have been coming kind of like in and out of the building. We're working on DECO and right now we're working on like making a big photo wall collage of pictures submitted by our students. So that's, that's pretty much everything. Does anyone have any like questions about anything?
There's so much going on and that's fabulous. Thank you. Council President Lou?
Yeah, I, you know, I just wanted to commend you and the rest of the students for everything that you've been through this year and all of the events and, you know, activities that you had going on. And also next time you have a Bob Ross painting night, I'd totally like to come. I think that would be super fun. They have great activities. So just you've done an incredible job and thank you for the updates.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. And I'm excited to see my high schooler go back to school hybrid soon. So I wish the whole school good luck with that and the middle schools as well. So we look forward to seeing you and whoever you bring with us next month or the following month and we'll get to meet them.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to our report out from the Tiger Chamber of Commerce. Jessica, are you ready?
I am. Good evening, Council. Just love community and membership engagement for the Tiger Chamber of Commerce. Our leadership Tiger class met today and learned about leading during crisis change and ambiguity. It's the first year that we've implemented this day for our leadership program. And it was very impactful and very relevant to our current times that we're living through. And then we have our Government Affairs and Public Policy Committee meeting coming up on April 15th. Our candidate endorsement committee is currently going through the interviewing process for the Tiger Twelveth and School District Board for possible endorsement. And we'll be making announcement about that soon on if or who we choose to endorse. And then we are hosting the City Center Urban Renewal Plan Amendment Panel Discussion on Wednesday, April 28th at 12:00 PM with Mayor Snyder and some of the city staff. So we're looking forward to that. And then the Tiger Shining Stars Community Awards Gala is coming up on Friday, April 30th at 7:00 PM. It's going to be streamed on the Tiger Chamber Facebook page and YouTube channel. And then we are currently accepting reservations for dinner and VIP boxes. It's going to look fairly similar to what it did in October. And be on the lookout on our social media because we are going to start announcing soon all of our awardees and scholarship recipients. And then save the date for Tiger Restaurant Month. It's a brand new program that we're implementing and that is going to be June of 2021. And we'll be releasing more information soon as we get those finalized. So and then Good Morning Tiger is every Thursday at 7:45. Check our calendar for more information. And then for the farmer's market, we are like three weeks out from opening day. We're scheduled to open on May 2nd from 9:00 AM till 1:30 PM on Tiger Street in Rotary Plaza. We are implementing tons of safety guidelines to make sure that we keep our community, our staff and our vendors safe. And so what we're asking is the community to remember to wear their masks, to limit the number of people that come to the market with them. And then also make sure that they're not touching anything that they're not going to purchase. And then for the Tiger Downtown Alliance, we want to thank all the community members and the business community that participated in the Ticket to Tiger program. We also want to thank the 300 plus community members that helped come and paint the Build Our New Tomorrow community mural that looks amazing on Main Street Stampin' Stationery. And we just appreciate everyone that was involved in that piece. And then if you want to see a time lapse video of the installation, it is available on the export on Tiger Facebook page. And then the current projects, the Tiger Town Alliance is working on is a quarter two promotional program somewhat similar to Tickets Tiger. And then also the 2021 Art Walk, which is projected to be at the beginning of June. That's all I have for you. Any questions?
Thank you, Jessica. Appreciate the updates and any council with questions. Counselor Newton?
I am really looking forward to Restaurant Month. I plan to try to hit as many as I can, even if it's to buy an iced tea. So I'm looking forward to it. I'm going to start June 1st and go all the way to June 30th. So I'm looking forward to it. Yeah.
I think you need to write a blog about that, Counselor Newton.
Yeah, I'm going to, maybe I'll reactivate my Twitter account, take pictures. Anyway, I'm looking forward to it.
Yay, thank you so much.
Counselor Shaw?
I was just going to mention, I'm going to follow Counsel Newton around. So wherever she goes, I'll go to for the solid month.
Perfect, awesome. Yeah, we're super excited about it. The restaurants seem super excited about it. So now we just need the community excited about it. So thank you.
Thank you very much and good to see you.
Yeah.
Oh, youth counselor Calderon, sorry.
Yeah, I was just going to say, like the other counselors, well, not the same. But I'm excited for the farmer's market. More astounds me that May 2nd is only three weeks away because it feels like it was just January and time is flying this year. But I'm excited for that.
Thank you, me too. We have, I think, four spaces left and then we are vacant, like we're at capacity. So that's great.
All right, thank you, Jessica. Appreciate it. All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda is used for routine items, including council meeting minutes and approval of contracts or intergovernmental agreements. Information on each item is available on the city's website in the packet for this meeting. These items may be enacted in one motion without separate discussion. Council members may request that an item be removed by motion for discussion and separate action. Tonight on the consent agenda, we will be proclaiming April as Arbor Month. We'll be approving and accepting city council meeting minutes from multiple meetings in December, January and February. And local contract review board will be taking action to approve a contract amendment for the Cook Park Artificial Turf Infield Installation. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. City Recorder, please conduct a roll call vote.
Council President Lou?
Yes.
Counselor Shaw?
Yes.
Mayor Snyder?
Yes.
Counselor Goodhouse?
Yes.
Counselor Newton?
Yes.
All right, consent agendas adopted unanimously. Thank you. And the next item is to proclaim April 18th to 24th, 2021 as Crime Victims Rights Week. Chief McAlpine, you're going to introduce and present this item?
Yes, again, Mayor and Council, Chief Captain McAlpine. And really the comments that I want to share is just an acknowledgement. This past year has been especially challenging for crime victims. You know, due to the pandemic and wildfires, we know the victims have felt more isolated and cut off from support systems. They've experienced housing instability, unemployment and health issues, making it difficult to leave abusive relationships. Equity issues can also be a barrier for victims getting the help that they need. So now more than ever, we want to get the word out to victims that they are seen and heard and we are here to help them in any way that we can. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, council, is there a motion?
Counselor Shaw, I move to proclaim April 18th through 24th, 2021 as National Crime Victims Rights Week.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. City Recorder, please conduct a roll call vote.
Council President Lou?
Yes.
Counselor Shaw?
Yes.
Mayor Snyder?
Yes.
Counselor Goodhouse?
Yes.
Counselor Newton?
Yes.
All right, the motion's adopted unanimously. We proclaim April 18th to 24th, 2021 as National Crime Victims Rights Week. Thank you, Chief. The next item on the agenda is to receive an update on the state of the district from Twelveth Valley Fire and Rescue. Chief Weiss, are you on the line?
I am. Thank you, Mayor Snyder and counselors. I believe I'm going to share and I can do that right now. Let's see if it works. And loading. Is that, you see that okay, everyone?
We do.
Fantastic. So thanks for the time this evening. I'm actually really excited now that I heard all the exciting news that's happening in Tiger and things that are opening up. I'd like to try out some of those restaurants as well. So now I'm pumped up and ready to go. So this evening, I'm going to go back a little bit in the year that we had, things that are current. And then look forward a little bit to what you can expect from your fire district in the future in this year. The picture on your screen is a picture of one of our firefighters wearing a Tyvek suit and carrying EMS equipment. And Twelveth Fire and Rescue immediately launched a COVID-19 task force last year, a little bit over a year ago, actually. And our intent, of course, was to make sure that our personnel were safe when they responded to calls. So they could respond to the next call and the next call and the next call. We closed our facilities during the pandemic and our facilities and fire stations continue to be closed to the public in order to keep our members safe. We want to make sure again that we can get out and respond to the coming calls and do it safely. At this point, we've had 12 employees out of roughly 600 employees that got COVID-19. And we haven't had anybody in quarantine or anybody with COVID for the last four months. So we've actually been doing fairly well for the size of our organization. The picture you see here is our old supply facility and the equipment in front of this individual's personal protective equipment, goggles, masks, gloves, all kinds of different equipment that we needed to respond to COVID-19 safely. This was an unusual year and what we learned was that our supply chain can be threatened when there's a pandemic or other emergencies. And we weren't able to get the equipment that we needed to respond to emergencies as fast as we wanted to. And when people ask us for help, we come. This was unique this year because we actually had to ask the public for help. We needed more equipment. We needed better equipment. And so we reached out to the public and we were absolutely humbled by the outreach of support from people like Tiger Twelveth and School District, the Home Depots businesses, private business owners, how they brought us equipment. And they actually provided so much equipment that we were able to share with some of our other partner agencies and other fire departments. The picture you see now is an engine and a truck driving through a neighborhood. And during the pandemic, with everything shut down, it was challenging to reach out to the communities that we serve and be engaged in a part of what they were doing. So we found other unique and creative ways to do this. The example in the picture above is actually a birthday party in a neighborhood. And a lot of people would call and say, would you participate in a parade for a birthday party or a retirement or some other special event? And so we kind of pivoted and agreed to some of these where we would drive through with the lights on, wave to the families and friends and find a way to participate. We also did some graduation ceremonies for the high schools because of course, myself having a senior last year, it was different for them. And so anyway, we could normalize it as best we could and be there. I think it was a better experience for everyone. So this is your very own Chief McAlpine. Hopefully you can see that. And this, or actually December of last year, we started doing vaccinations. And Twelveth Fire and Rescue, much like our partner agencies, we weren't really sure who was going to give vaccinations out when the vaccinations became available. And we had some individuals within our organization that recommended we apply for Alert2S and have the ability to give vaccines ourselves, which we ended up doing. And it was a good thing because by doing so, we were able to get vaccines from the county, actually from three counties, and distribute vaccines initially to our personnel and our partner agencies like Tiger Police. We've continued to support our counties, Clackamas, Washington and Yamhill County. And to date, we've delivered over 40,000 doses of vaccine to our community members throughout our service area. So last year during wildfire season, it became very apparent that things had changed. Normally, we respond to wildfires across the state. We have trained individuals that volunteer to be a part of our wildland force. They go across the state and they go into California and other areas. This year was unique because we had the largest wildfire we have had in the district's history. It was over 800 acres out in Chehalum Mountain Bald Peak area. It taxed the organization and the personnel and presented us with something that we had not seen before. I think with some hard work, some aggressive firefighting, some luck and some topography changes, we were able to save all the homes and animals on Chehalum Mountain. Although a lot of people were dispersed and had to evacuate, eventually they were all able to get home safely. So we appreciate the work and we're going to continue to work hard to train, hopefully before the true wildfire season starts, to get more people trained up. We have the equipment, we have the apparatus, but more training is always a good thing when faced with a new challenge. So some of you that have seen the state of the district before might recognize this slide. And this is a data slide that we do with every And this is a data slide that we do with every jurisdiction, every city that we serve. And you'll notice that there was 5,888 calls for service in the Tigerd area, which there was actually a drop from 2019, where there were 6,003 calls for service. You'll notice the makeup is the same as it is everywhere. Typically, it's EMS calls, less fires. But for the city of Tigerd, the dispersion is pretty much every day of the week equally. And I think much like calls for service for law enforcement, fire calls were down, we believe, because people stayed home. There was less cars on the road. And there were some that didn't call 911 because they were afraid of the pandemic and of COVID-19. So now, as we move into 2021, call volume is ticking up, and we're getting back to where we have the normal calls for service that we've had in previous years. So we've also done some capital improvement projects over this year, and this is one of the larger ones. This is our logistic service center. It's off of Avery Street in Twolton. Our site before was out in Alloa, and you might remember that was where we had our fleet and facilities and supply. They were all in separate buildings, and it was the very corner of our district. This past year, we were able to move to a facility in Twolton that puts us centrally located and puts all three of those services underneath the same structure. If you recall the picture before where I showed the PPE and the masks and our old supply center, this is our new supply. This is just the supply portion of the building. So now it creates efficiencies. They all can work together underneath the same roof, and we look forward to having that for many, many years to come. In addition, this is a building near Charbonneau off of I-5 and Miley. For the past five years, we've been looking for a site to locate a station in that area. We still have not been able to find a site for a traditional fire station, but we found this building just off the freeway. And that arch in the center of the building leads directly into where our new fire station, Station 54, will be located. They're finishing up the remodel to make it more like a fire station and be more open to all of our personnel. And it should be done, we're hoping, in June. We're going to move a two-person rescue from the Wilsonville Station to this station to respond to that area where there's a high volume of calls. One of the things that we look forward to, and we've been doing for the past 12 years, is firefighter paramedic recruitment. We're currently recruiting for our next firefighter academy and our paramedic academy. And just to remind Mayor and staff, the paramedic is a position that we created several years ago to provide another way into the organization. I believe the mayor still has his certification as a paramedic. And with that certification, you can actually be a member of Twolton Fire and Rescue. And then you can promote to firefighter paramedic. We've had a lot of success bringing people in as paramedics, and they've now promoted to firefighter paramedic and will continue on their career in the organization. We're still holding a lot of virtual events for those that are interested in jobs with Twolton Fire and Rescue. And if you haven't seen this particular firefighter on social media, please check out our firefighter profiles that we have on social media feeds. They're fantastic recruitment and outreach tools. Very proud of what they're doing. Twolton Fire and Rescue will continue to create an environment that's inclusive and welcoming to everyone. And our outreach and our efforts will continue to meet that goal. So this is something new to the organization. You will find it at tvfr.com, and this is our interactive burn map. One of the most popular questions we get at the front desk is, can I burn? And do I live in an area where I can burn? And you can go to this interactive map and click on it where you live, and it'll tell you if it's a burn day or isn't a burn day. I will say, as we look back to the few slides ago where we talked about wildfire, this may become more handy very quickly. We had two wildfires today. We had a wildfire yesterday, and we're only in April. I'm certainly concerned because of the weather conditions, the dry, the wind, that more fires, more brush fires could happen. So please, folks, if you're thinking about burning, contact DEQ, look at our burn map, and determine if you're in an area where you can even burn, and then make sure it's a burn day before you start a fire. And I know Tigerd has a bond measure coming up. Twolton Fire and Rescue sought a bond in 2005, and voters approved that in 2005. And now, November of 2021, we're also going to ask voters to approve a bond. What's important about this bond is very similar to yours in that that 2005 bond is going to fall off. And so the same 14 cents for our old bond will be on this bond. So taxpayers will see no change, no increase in their current rate of 14.1 cents per thousand assessed value. So look for that, and if you have questions on that, I'd be happy to answer them. These are some of the projects that we will be working on. These are all bond projects or capital projects for us. Certainly, the training center that we have off Tonkwin Road between Sherwood and Twolton and Wilsonville, it's been there as long as I have, and it's aging, and it's in need of repair. It's in need of new training facilities, training equipment, training props. So that is one of our top priorities for this particular bond, is improvements to our training center. As you know, stations age, and we have some stations that are quite old, some that didn't get seismic improvements, and some that just need to be replaced. So some of the bond dollars will go towards station replacement, station remodels, and station seismic improvements. One thing we did with our last bond that we intend to do with this one as well is find land that we can use in the future. And as you know, we're a very data-driven organization. And when we decide to place a station, it's based on a minimum of five years of data that tells us where that station should be. Sometimes, when it drops that pin, that land is no longer available. So we plan to lean forward and once again, try and find some land that we can purchase now to be used at a later date. And as with a lot of agencies, apparatus ages, and we have an aging fleet, we will use some of our bond dollars, if successful, to do capital apparatus replacement. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that the mayor or the council might have this evening.
Thanks, Chief. I'll ask a couple quick questions. First of all, I couldn't tell, are you wanting me to apply for a paramedic position? I couldn't quite tell. You don't have to answer that, but kind of made me laugh there, trying to sell to all the paramedics in the audience. I do have a serious question. On one of the slides where you had all the metrics, can you? I'm just curious what you're using or what the district is using as the definition of critical patients? Is that just a measure of like whether they were transported code three? Or is there some other more specific clinical measure that you're using to designate that?
Yes, and I was recruiting you just to answer that question for everybody to hear. But, you know, Chief Kennedy can answer this question way better than I. But what I believe it's referring to is cardiac arrest, STEMI, stroke. Those are the main ones that we call the critical, and that's the ones we really want to track.
Okay. Interesting. I've never seen that metric reported out quite like that. And if you guys did that in the past, I certainly don't remember it, but I appreciate you clarifying that. Or Chief Kennedy, did you want to clarify it further? Is that accurate? It's STEMI stroke and cardiac arrest?
That's correct, Mr. Paramedic Snyder, that we do keep it pretty strict with our boundaries. It is cardiac arrest, strokes, certain respiratory patients. And so we do have a strict criteria to what goes into that, and we can certainly furnish that with you.
I was just curious. I mean, it's an interesting metric to see of the medical calls. You know, how many were of that nature? You know, it looks like about maybe one in five, one in six patients. So I was just curious. All right, Counselor Newton, you've got a question or a comment?
Yeah, just really quick. I think the burn map is a great resource. I've noticed after that February ice storm we had, when I'm out driving in the more rural parts of the county, there's a lot of burning going on. People lost trees and, you know, so I've just noticed a lot more burning. And then the other question I had, there were a lot of fires. I mean, we just had a horrible year. And I know, remember, I got positive feedback from friends that how you responded to the fire that you had out on Chehalum Mountain. But did you have as many members of our crews go to other places this year? Southern Oregon, California? I mean, was that fairly typical year? Or were people, or were the crews, did the crews stay here more because of the kind of a season we had? I'm just curious, and that, those are my questions. Thanks.
Yeah, great question. Thank you for that. The fact is, we were down a little bit in terms of how much we went out of state. And then it was a lot to do with timing, quite frankly. So we never had an issue as it related to our staffing locally. We still had resources that were available to go out elsewhere. But because of the way they fell, the only one we couldn't get to was when Clackamas really needed some help. We were also engaged, and everybody in Western Washington County was engaged with the Hague Lake Fire. And so that was a challenge. But then there was an opportunity for California in Mendocino. So I guess to answer your question is, it didn't become an issue. It wasn't as much, and mostly it was because of timing, not necessarily not the ability to do so. And I wanted to go back to the mayor's comment on the critical calls, because that was something that I did forget is, we do a lot of studies at Twolton Fire and Rescue. We partner with some of the hospitals regionally and nationally. And STEMI's and cardiac arrest is something that we have absolutely focused on over at least the past five years. Now we're able to use more of the information we have for these metrics. So it is absolutely critical for us, and so we track it closely.
Chief, I'm realizing we're using lingo here. So just for the public who's wondering what a STEMI is, that's basically, I'll have serious heart attack is the way I would describe it. So it's someone that's having death of their heart tissue, and that just refers to a very specific description of it.
Yeah, and then, that's okay. And we have a protocol in place where we have to get the information transmitted to the hospitals as quick as we can if it is a STEMI-type event. So yeah, there's a lot that goes into that. Sorry about the lingo.
That's okay. Well, I think about that a lot with our staff and all the lingo we use. So Counselor Shaw.
I think that was a terrific and informative presentation. Have you also done studies on the efficiency and perhaps even cost savings of the consolidation that you all have done recently? Is that something that's within your reports?
So do you mean consolidation of different areas or consolidation?
Warehouse that you had with all your equipment? And I'm asking because, you know, obviously, the city's looking, potentially doing something similar. So I'm just curious if you have studies that show that's been cost-effective, efficient, timely?
Yeah, and it wouldn't be data-driven necessarily. It's more anecdotal. So if you consider the fact that you have three different divisions of your organization that actually work together on a daily basis, and they're spread out by yards, feet, miles, and then you put them underneath the same roof, now you have efficiencies that you gain. And hopefully, you can do some consolidation with how it's managed as well. The other thing that's, again, somewhat anecdotal, but I could probably put data behind it, is the ability for them to get equipment out to the stations from a central location. They actually do have that down where, to the minute they know how long it's going to take to travel around the district and provide the equipment to the stations, pick up what they need to, and move it on to the next one, it was very antiquated before. And so now, from a central location, we can be more efficient and maybe do less days a week, where we had to do it, we had to move it every day a week, just to try and cover all the geography of the station. Now it's going to be a little bit more efficient.
I'll just put a plug in for the bond measure. I can remember going to training, this is dating myself, but 26 years ago is when I probably started going to take ACLS and PALS classes at the training center. And I will tell you that I thought the building was old then, and I haven't been in it in a while, but I'm pretty sure it's not been dramatically updated, which means it's going to be really old now.
Yes, there's a couple props that we did replace since then. But by and large, 26 years ago, and my 30 years ago, actually working there, not a lot has changed, no.
Yeah, so I, just a little help for you there, Chief.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
With your bond measure. Any other questions or comments? Chief, thank you very much. Appreciate it, and good to see you, and thanks for helping. I want to personally thank the fire district both for what you've done in the last year to help protect our community and continue providing service. And then what you've done on the vaccine front is phenomenal. 40,000 vaccine administrations is incredible in your service area. And I just want to thank you for being at the front of that, so.
Thank you very much.
All right, we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, which is a legislative public hearing considering amendments to Tigerd Municipal Code 3.24.2.080, System Development Charge Deferral Requests. I will start by opening the public hearing. Anyone that wishes to testify will be able to do so by phone. You may call in to get in the queue now by calling 503-966-4101. And with that, we will now go to the staff report from Associate Planner Lindor.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. For the record, my name is Agnes Lindor, Associate Planner. And the item before you tonight is a public hearing to modify the submittal process for deferral requests of transportation and park system development charges, known as SDCs. And again, this would be a change to Title III of the municipal code. So the current code requires the applicant to submit the deferral request no later than at time of building permit submittal or land use application if there isn't a building permit requirement. The proposal before you tonight would allow applicants to submit the deferral requests prior to issuance of the building permit or upon land use approval. The reason why staff is recommending this change is, first, it allows the applicant additional flexibility by allowing them additional time to consider a deferral. A lot of times, applicants at the time of building permit submittal aren't aware that deferral is even an option or the amount of fee that would be due, and they might later want to defer once they get those exact fees. It also allows applicants to apply any credits that they receive from doing public improvements. Those can be applied only when the SDCs are deferred. Otherwise, they would just receive a credit that could be used at a future date for future improvements that they may or may not need to do. So developers prefer to obviously use the fee to go towards the fees that they would be required to pay. And lastly, the current process results in additional administrative work, both for staff and additional review times for staff and also the applicant. Because currently, if an applicant has already submitted a building permit and they choose to use the deferral process, they have to withdraw their existing permit and then reapply. And that, a lot of times, the permit that they've already submitted has undergone some level of review. So they're responsible for covering those fees, and then any fees that would result from the new permit. And for administrative duties, staff has to void all the permits that they previously submitted, create the new ones, and then essentially start the review process over. So for all of these reasons, that's why staff is recommending to change the deferral process to allow applicants to submit their deferral requests prior to issuance of the building permit or upon land use approval if there's no building permit that's required. Thank you.
All right, are there any questions of staff? This is not time for consideration or deliberation, but any questions on the staff report? Okay. Public testimony, I don't believe we received any written public testimony, but I'll make sure with the city recorder. Craig, can you confirm that?
Yes, we didn't receive any testimony.
Mr. Nullup, are there any callers in the queue that wish to testify on this?
Mr. Mayor, at this time, no callers in the queue.
Okay. I will close the public hearing. Before we get into deliberation, I just need to clarify with the city attorney whether I have a possible conflict. I do have some small developments that are in process that my wife and I are majority owners in within the city. So City Attorney Rahala, if I had developments that may somehow benefit from this, should I not participate and recuse myself from the deliberation?
So, Mr. Mayor, because this-
So, Mr. Mayor, because this does not change the amount of SDCs, it would be appropriate to declare a potential conflict, but not an actual, so you can participate and vote.
Okay, so possible conflict, which I think I just declared. And or potential was the word you used. Okay. So we will, we will move on to council consideration and discussion. Who would like to start? Or a motion?
I move to approve ordinance number 21 dash 09.
I'll second the motion.
All right, it's been moved in second and is the, is there any further discussion? I will just say, I think this is, this is common sense that we're reducing administrative burden, making it more flexible and not costing the city or applicants any more headache or cost than they need to. So seems pretty logical is my, my addition to the discussion. City Recorder, please read the number and title of the ordinance.
Ordinance number 21 dash 09. An ordinance amending Tigered Municipal Code Section 3.24.080 to allow for submittal of deferral requests prior to issuance of building permits and land use approval if no building permit is required.
And a roll call vote, please.
Council President Lube.
Yes.
Counselor Shaw.
Yes.
Mayor Snyder.
Yes.
Counselor Goodhouse.
Yes.
Counselor Newton.
Yes.
All right, ordinance number 21 dash 09 is adopted unanimously. Thank you. And appreciate the continued improvement work on the SDC deferral process. Planner Lindor and the community development team, I just want to thank you for that as you find things that can be approved, improved.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to item number seven on the agenda, which is a public hearing to consider approval of resolution for the fiscal year 2021 third quarter budget supplemental. I will open the public hearing. Anyone that wants to testify will be allowed to do so. Please call the following phone number to get in the queue, 503-966-4101. Management Analyst Kang, staff report, please. Mr. Kang, if you're speaking, we are not hearing you.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Counselors. My name is Steve Kang, Senior Management Analyst from Finance and Information Services. Tonight I'm here to present the fiscal year 2021 third quarter budget supplemental. Detailed descriptions and the financial impact are outlined in the agenda item summary. In the following statement, I will present brief descriptions of the items that are included in the budget supplemental. City management, one request from the city management and it is requesting to fund facilitation services for Public Safety Advisory Board. The board meets every two weeks to review Tiger's public safety practices and from, and form recommendations to the city council for improvements. This request will be funding the facilitation service services for these meetings. Facilitation services have been and will continue to be a key to navigating topics and difficult discussions in a fair and impartial manner. Central services. Central services has three requests, all from the property management division. First item is requesting to increase appropriations for COVID-19 related expenditures. Second request is the, is to fund the extension of the DLR group contract to provide and perform the next phase of the city facilities consolidation project feasibility. The DLR group contract extension was approved by the city council on February 9, 2021. The last request is a Jipley property appraisal and environment side of assessment. This will provide funding to the, to perform a property value appraisal in phase one and phase two environmental site assessment as needed for the approximate three acre southern part of the Jipley owned property. Finance and Information Services. In December 2020, Washington County allocated roughly $100,000 in mental health and community psyche funds to the city of Tiger with the goal of building public health, public mental health and community psyche during the pandemic. These funds were used for building community activities, reimagining seasonal celebrations, increasing access to technology and community RP's. Public Works. Public Works Administration is requesting additional personnel services appropriations. This request is due to the response to the COVID-19 pandemic, which has caused significant constraints in the Division Personnel Services budget. Capital Improvement Plan. Capital Improvement Plan has three requests. First one is the Cook Park softball baseball infield. The project is requesting for additional appropriations for the increasing manufacturing cost of product and materials and increase in the subgrade work and the cement amounts. Second request is the Red Rock Creek Trail Implementation Plan. The project will be moving forward as planned. However, in January 2021, Metro determined funding source would remain federal dollars to be managed by ODOT. Thus, this request will reduce the CIP budget by the amount managed by ODOT. Misdeaf funding will be still, still run through City of Tiger. Last request is the Public Works Field Staff, Field Staff Work Area and Break Room. This additional request will help the city remodel the front area to accommodate the recreation staff moving from, moving over from Fennel Creek House. Staff or engineering staff create an ADA height compliant transaction counter with the pass through tray and sliding glass door, glass window like the current court setup. And improve the lunchroom for crew staff. Police Department. The first request is the overtime expenses and revenue reimbursement related to annual traffic safety grants administered through ODOT. The enforcements include DUII high visibility enforcement, safety belt enforcement blitzes, pedestrian safety enforcement, distracted driving enforcement and speed enforcement. All grants are federal funds and reimburse the city officers overtime expenses. The next request is a body cam and dash cam expansion and TASER upgrade project. For this request, we have representatives from police department who will present some overview of this project. With that, I'll hand it over the presentation to Chief McAlpine. Chief?
Thank you, Steve. And again, Mayor and Council, Chief Kathy McAlpine. I have with me tonight also Traffic Sergeant Lee Erickson, who do the majority of the presentation, as well as Business Analyst Lisa Shaw. The one thing I would want to say that's very important is Sergeant Erickson is our department expert. And he just recently obtained the Advanced Force Science Specialist Certification, which was an 18 week course over 300 hours. So he's extensively looked at force response tools of the trade. And I think you will find him very knowledgeable in this presentation. So with that, I will turn it over to Lee.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening, Mayor and Councils. For the record, Sergeant Lee Erickson with the Tiger Police Department. If we can advance to the next slide, we'll get started with the information. So to note to start out, this is nothing new for us. All of the things that we're considering updating or expanding on are items that we've had that we've been using for years. So first is we're looking at expanding our body worn camera program to include all of our sworn staff. We're looking at upgrading our conducted electrical weapons from the TASER X2 to the next generation. We're looking at modernizing and replacing our fleet or in car dash camera systems from the Panasonic Arbitrator that we currently have in place. And modernizing and replacing our interview camera systems, which is currently the iRecord system. Next slide, please. So to give you a brief history, our in car video systems go back to Vision Hawk, which we had first installed around 2005. And then in about 2008, we updated to the Arbitrator system, which is what we currently have in place. So those systems that we currently have in place are about 13 years old at this point. We've been using body worn cameras since about 2008. It started with our motors with a body worn camera and then it moved to a point of view camera with the Axon Flex 2 and Flex 1 systems. And then we expanded that to include our school resource officers, our K9 and our community services officers over the last five years. Our TASER CEWs, the conducted electrical weapons we've had since around 2003. We started with the M26s. We've moved on to the X26s around 2010. And currently we're carrying the X2s since 2015. And we're looking at upgrading those to the TASER 7 systems. Individual cameras, all of our officers are currently issued iPhones that have the Axon Capture app on them. And that's how we take our digital photos. In the past, we've had digital cameras and even going back to 35 millimeter cameras that we've used over the years. But currently we're using digital cameras integrated with the iPhones and this application that allows us to take digital photos in the field. The interview room has the iRecord system. It's been in place since around 2015. There are certain requirements under law for us to record video interviews of individuals with regard to cases that are mandatory minimum sentencing or involve juveniles. And then we also have digital evidence storage. It's infrastructure that's maintained by the city's information technology department. And the videos and everything that are contained on those are most of the time distributed the CDs or DVD discs to those who need to see the information that's contained in those files. We'd like to move that to a more robust cloud based solution for storing that evidence. Next slide, please. So in our current state, we have nine officers who are wearing body worn cameras. And as I said before, it's primarily members of our traffic team. It's our K9 officers. It's our school resource officers. It's our community service officers, as well as a few other officers who have been trained to test out on these systems. And with those, we have the ability to upload all that information to the cloud for storage and safekeeping. We have, we've had our in car video systems for a number of years now. Currently, we have one of the Axon Fleet 2 systems installed in one of our vehicles. And we have about 30 Panasonic Arbitrator systems installed. And as I said before, before, those systems are about 13 years old at this point. The Arbitrator portable microphones are unreliable and are failing to the point that we are no longer able to guarantee their use. And we cannot get any more replacements from the manufacturer because they're just not making them or supporting them anymore. As I said before, we are currently carrying the TASER X2s. And we've been participating in what's called the Technology Assurance Program for the last five years to continue to support those. But that is now coming to an end. And then Axon Capture and Citizen, as I mentioned before, we have the Axon Capture app on our iPhones used to take photos in the field or audio recordings if we need them. We use Axon Citizen and we just started testing this. It was a free offer from the company during the pandemic for us to be able to use this. But it allows us to, Axon Citizen allows us to collect and triage digital evidence directly from community members and avoids the circumstance where we may have to take a picture of a picture or something like that to collect digital evidence from a community member. Next slide, please. The national narrative and some of the other considerations as we're going through this. There's been an emphasis on the use of body worn cameras at all levels, expectation from the public to use them. And we also heard locally from community members that in the, in the wake of what happened in the last spring, for us to have these cameras and to use them. So there's a lot of support from them out there. The electronic evidence, there's the expectation that those things are, that we're collecting the electronic evidence and we're maintaining it appropriately. From our district attorney's offices, from media and with regard to public transparency. We, it, it's important for us to have video evidence for trials and to provide transparency to the community. Redaction and privacy concerns and policies. It's important for us to consider that videos used appropriately and privacy is safeguarded to the extent possible. Redactions can take time, but solutions under consideration allow us to automate some of that process and streamline it. Interview room requirements, there's some state laws that require us, like I said before, in certain situations to audio and video record interviews, particularly when it comes to mandatory minimum sentencing felony crimes and cases involving juveniles when we're conducting an interview at the police station. And then this is also about dependability, clarity and stability of images. New technology makes for clearer records and systems that are more reliable. Consider how many of us still have phones that are more than two years old that we're using and we're relying on camera systems to collect evidence for transparency and for criminal cases that is older than that. Next slide, please. I'm sorry, one more point on that last slide. We consider these systems to provide corroborating evidence. So the benefits of systems like body worn cameras are that they provide evidence that enhance the record as a piece of the puzzle. The cameras can record with greater clarity and resolution, detail, and in low light conditions better than the human eye can. So it's a piece of the puzzle for us, but it's not the whole story. Next slide, please. So from an information technology standpoint, some of the main advantages here is the, the cloud based solution for storage. Currently, we have about seven terabytes of digital data that we've been managing on servers within the city's infrastructure. And we would have the ability to take that information and apply it to the, the cloud storage that we're looking at purchasing. The Axon Citizen program that I talked about before. It's very simple for us to create a link that we can share with the community member for, so that they can directly upload their digital evidence to the cloud where it can be triaged by the investigators and then maintained by our property and evidence technicians. This reduces staff resources, both in the information technology department and in the police department, having cloud based storage. The solution, it lessens the burdens on, on our resources internally. External vendor support. There's less infrastructure on site for IT to maintain, as well as any problems that come along with new equipment is going to be fixed by the vendor. The photographic solution is built in with the app like we've already been using and we can continue to use that in the future. It's also available for most any kind of platform for a mobile device. It could be on an iPhone or it could be on an Android, depending on what we apply in the future for mobile phones. All these systems are secure, CGIS compliance. So any of the criminal justice information that is stored in these servers, it's already been vetted and it meets the requirements to make sure all that stuff is safe. And then privacy redactions there, the automatic redactions to help safeguard privacy where needed. And there's instant accessibility so that when we need that information, we can access it. And to the extent that the body worn cameras that we're considering have the ability to be live streamed by supervisors. If there's an incident in the field where an officer is not answering the radio and there's concern about what happened, if that camera is already recording, a supervisor can start to remote view it and find the GPS location of where that camera is at. Next slide, please. So for our fleet or in car video solutions, we wanted to field test the, the Axon system, which is known as Fleet 2 as a pilot program. So about six months ago, when we were setting up a new vehicle, we installed the system in that vehicle. And we've been using it for the last six months. And so far, the feedback from everybody who's used it highlights the ease of use with it. It does have a simplified use. The cameras interface with mobile computers for control, video review and uploading of the files in the field to the cloud. So we don't have to come back to the station to upload the video files. They can also be turned off or on manually at the camera itself in case we don't have access to our computers. The triggers for activation, some of the system is automated so that the cameras can be turned on in the same way that our current camera systems are on. So some, some of the triggers that we use right now are if the officer turns on their emergency lights, if they reach a certain speed with their vehicle, or if they get involved in a crash. Though those triggers will automatically turn the in car video cameras on, as well as any body worn camera that happens to be assigned with that same vehicle. And then the image quality is greatly increased. Again, 13 years of innovation have, have allowed resolution and video quality go up. So as you can see here, the one, the picture on the left is our current in car system. And the picture on the right is an example from the Fleet 2 system that we're looking at. They're both taken around the same time a day, within about four days of each other. And they're both showing vehicle, the patrol vehicle in motion. So you can see how much clearer one image is. So you can see how much clearer one image is versus the other. Next slide, please. The other reason why we're also considering in-car video in addition to the body worn cameras and not just body worn cameras is because of, of things like this. This is a typical example of a picture that you'd see once the cameras are activated in the vehicle. Doesn't really help us for anything. And as we've seen over the years with our municipal court, we've been able to show violations on occasion from the in-car video systems that help in prosecution of those trials. So we want to continue to have that capability as well as adding the body worn camera solution to those kinds of problems. The new cameras also have a smaller profile. You can kind of see it in the upper right-hand corner of this image. They take up less of the windscreen so that there's more visibility out the front of the vehicle for the officers and it's a little bit safer for us to have them in there. Next slide, please. So the body worn camera that we're looking at is the Axon Body Three. It's been field tested as a loaner that we've had from the manufacturer for the last several months. And so far, we've found that they are just as easy to use as the body worn cameras that we have deployed with some of our officers already. Just they've added better features to them. There's a video and audio cues of activation. Officers are alerted when the camera is turned on and reminded occasionally about every two minutes while it's recording with video, audio and haptic cues so that they still know that it's, it's recording. We have other agencies around us that are currently using Axon body cameras. B. Pretin, Hillsborough and Sherwood are those agencies. We have a request and a recommendation from the Washington County District Attorney's Office that we find a consistent platform across the county to make it easier for the use of the body worn camera videos in trials. Remote triggers on calls, the body worn cameras that we're looking at have different systems that they can integrate within. So that if an officer draws their handgun from their, from their holster, or if they activate their Taser prior to deploying it, the cameras are automatically turned on for them so that takes some of the burden off of them. They can focus on the critical incidents in front of them and they don't have to worry about whether or not their camera activated. It just, it takes care of it for them. Multiple viewpoints, when there's more than one body camera on a scene and recording at the same time, the system will collate all those videos together so that we have a multiple viewpoint of all the cameras synced up on the backend as we review it through the cloud. And then simplified use, most of the operations for these cameras are conducted with only one or two buttons. Again, making it easier for the officers to turn them on or turn, you know, do what they need to do without having to focus on it or think through multiple steps. And they can focus on the situation that's in front of them. Next slide, please. The iPhone Axon Capture System, like I talked about before, this is how we are currently taking digital photos in the field. It also allows us to do audio recordings if we need to. It can also be used as an ad hoc video and audio system to collect that kind of evidence in the field if need to. If a body worn camera is unavailable, these can collect some video or, or audio similar to a situation where detective might be interviewing someone in the field and the body worn camera wasn't obtained in time to, to be able to do that. All of the, this system, the Axon Capture System on the iPhones has replaced all of our other investigatory cameras. We used to give officers digital cameras to use on an integral basis. But now that we have the phones and the cameras app in the phone, we're able to, to use this. And frankly speaking, the, the cameras and the phones are way better than the digital cameras that we had before. Next slide. Axon Citizens, like I said before, it's a solution to collect directly from a community member, any kind of digital evidence or electronic evidence that they may have for a case. Simple process that the, the officer would create a link, text it or email it to the community member, allows them to upload that, that electronic evidence to the cloud. And then the officer can go in and triage the information that was obtained and then submit it as evidence like we normally would. And then property evidence specialists can manage it from there. So again, it, it kind of shortens the chain, takes out that need to. Sometimes we've had cases where we've had to take a picture of a picture with our phones and upload that as evidence versus just getting it directly from the, whatever we were looking at before. Next slide, please. So the Taser Sevens, the conducted electrical weapons that we're looking at, this is the next generation of conducted electrical weapons. It's similar to our current X twos. It has two shots loaded into it. It has semi-automatic operation. It has a targeting laser and we have the capability of providing warning arcs without deploying the probes. But it has, they've simplified the use and enhanced the capabilities. Primarily, they've redesigned the cartridge so that there's increased reliability for connection and a better chance of overcoming resistance if, if that's encountered. And that's why we deployed the, the Taser. That these Tasers also have the ability to trigger the body worn cameras. It's integrated into the Taser itself as opposed to a capability add-on that can be purchased as it is with the Taser X twos. They're safer, more effective. They have a higher pulse rate. The system is enhanced to increase the chances of incapacitating the threat from multiple hits from the same Taser. And these allow for better de-escalation outcomes. They have a louder warning arc and they also have a brighter, more visible green targeting laser. These both make the Taser better suited to increase the chances that we can safely de-escalate a situation without rising to a higher level of force. Next slide, please. So for the interview rooms, currently we have two interview rooms in our station. One is for interviewing community members, witnesses or survivors of crime. The other is primarily for interviewing suspects. That is a more secure location. The current system that we have, the I record system is at the, the end of life. With the statutory requirements we have, we need a reliable zero failure system to ensure interviews that we are obligated to record will be recorded. This option creates uniformity across all three of our primary video recording systems. The in-car, the body worn camera and the interview room would all be from the same one. We could have a capture of video from driving to the call to in-person contact to drive into the station to the interview and then whatever else, all in one package. And it's clean, it's professional in appearance. Next slide. I'll turn this over to Lisa Shaw, Business Manager, to talk about the funding for this proposal.
Hello, yes, hi, this is Lisa Shaw, Business Manager for Tiger Police. And you have before you the five-year contract costs, the funding that we have already on hand and then our request during the Q three supplemental. The contract cost over the five years is one point four six million dollars. We have a considerable amount, almost forty-four percent of the costs covered already in our base budget. And there, there's two pieces to that. The first piece is we have funding available within the levy fund. We had a, a certain amount already set aside for some materials and services that can be dedicated to the nine sworn officers that will be receiving body worn cameras, driving cars with dash cams and Tasers. So we're able to use some of that levy funding. Additionally, because we already work with Axon, we already have some evidence.com digital, digital storage. We're already on a program with our existing Tasers. So we have some base budget already allocated and we can take that existing base budget along with the money that we have in the levy. And that gets you to the second line, the existing budget. So what we're asking counsel tonight is to consider that final line, that general fund request of about a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars a year, sort of in addition to what we already have budgeted. I would like to point out that we've worked with RISK, thank you to RISK, for identifying there's a CIS grant that we have tentatively been awarded. As long as we can spend at least fifty thousand dollars in body worn camera equipment this fiscal year, which we should be able to do, we would be awarded twenty-five thousand dollars and that would offset the year one cost. So the one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars that we're requesting upfront would be offset by the twenty-five thousand dollars which would go back to the general fund. We have looked at some other grants, some federal grants, and there, there aren't, there really aren't any grants right now that would be appropriate for us. So we can certainly keep an eye out in the future. But right now, the CIS grant is the, the most suitable and the one that we're eligible for. That's all I have to say for now, can certainly answer questions at the end of the presentation. I'd like to turn it back over to Sergeant Erickson and Steve, can you advance the slide?
Thank you, Lisa. I'm not seeing the, the presentation, so I'm not sure if we've advanced to the next slide or not. But in just in conclusion, Axon is uniquely poised to provide a solution like this for an agency like us and a solution that's integrated across multiple systems and provides for a level of automaticity that allows officers to focus their attention on other things at critical times. Coming with this is the Technology Assurance Program where all of these items are the incorporated programmed equipment, or there's programmed equipment replacement timelines built into this as well as onsite spares if an equipment or a device should fail and cost-free repairs anytime we do have the need to repair any of the devices that we're purchasing. IT does support the solution. It fits the national narrative by enhancing transparency and accountability while safeguarding privacy concerns. It follows the District Attorney's Office recommendation for one system that is under, that is also being used by other agencies in the county. And the idea of the body worn camera expansion was received or received a unanimous endorsement from the Public Safety Advisory Board on March twenty-second. Next slide, please. I'll turn it over to Chief McAlpine for any final thoughts before we hand it off to finance to conclude the presentation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sergeant Erickson and Lisa. Again, in closing, I know this is a lot of information, but one, it's a, it's a big ask. And two, I think it is extremely important in this day and age of policing. As noted, the transparency and accountability to our community is paramount. And by enhancing our program and upgrading the technology, I think is critical. I want to commend our city manager. As I was preparing to make this budget request in the next fiscal year, he too saw the, the urgency that we needed and supported us asking for a Q three supplemental increase rather than waiting to the next budget cycle. And, and so the other thing that's worth noting is, again, when we had a riot situation here in Tigerd, we had to quickly scramble to borrow body worn cameras from our partner agencies. And that really isn't acceptable in this day and age as well. And, and our officers are asking for it. They're, they're completely on board, they're comfortable and they too want to have the ability of transparency on their actions. So again, we're here to answer any questions when there's a lot of technical. Oh, the last thing that we did not prepare in here, but if you have been watching again, then the national news, you may have seen in Minnesota where an officer accidentally shot somebody when they thought that they were deploying their, their Taser. We do have, our Tasers are on the opposite hand, not their strong arm, they're bright yellow. And so there's a lot of built-in safe that we probably would have taken a photo had we, you know, known about that incident and shared that with you. But just want to bring that to your attention too, that this technology is quite different than our firearms and, and our training is such that our officers should not be confused at any time of what tool they're using. So with that, again, we happy to answer any questions.
All right. So I, I have, I guess I just have a process question here for the staff. We're in the middle of a public hearing around the budget and I realize all this is connected together. I, I would suggest that we ask, but let, let me ask this of staff. Is there more to the staff report from, from the finance staff?
Yes, and probably defer the questions to the end of the presentation. So we can, I can go, go forward with the rest of the presentation.
Well, I, I don't, I, I guess I just want to make sure that we don't lose this moment in the content that we just heard. Is it, City Attorney Rahala, is it acceptable in the middle of this public hearing for us to have the discussion and ask questions of the chief about, well, I guess the discussion we got to be careful of. But can we ask questions of the chief around this proposal and the content that she and Sergeant Erickson have just presented? Or how, how do I manage the, the fact that we're in the middle of a public hearing?
Yes, it probably makes sense to answer those questions now and then continue the rest of the presentation and then have the discussion on the merits all at the end.
Okay, so questions of the chief or Sergeant Erickson on the police presentation? It's pretty thorough and I know that it's in line with, you know, discussions the council and budget committee have had in the last year and consistent with the Public Safety Advisory Board recommendation. So if, if the council doesn't have a bunch of questions, that's, I, I'm comfortable with that. But I just want to make sure, you know, this is a relatively significant financial investment, but there will also be time for that in the discussion. So any questions, final opportunity of counselors? And Counselor Shaw and Counselor Goodhouse, I do not have video feed from you right now. So raise your hand if you've got, I guess, raise your hand electronically if you want to speak otherwise. Okay, we'll move on. Mr. King?
Yes. Mayor?
You, you have further presentation, correct?
Correct. Give me just a second, I'm bringing up presentation again. I'll just go with the verbal presentation. It's okay, it's just one last item. So thank you, Chief. And we have a not last, last on the item is a non-budgetary impact item. And this item is from the risk management and is requesting to increase the risk analyst position from point eight FTE to one point oh FTE. In order to ensure OSHA compliance, a number of programs needed to be established or updated. And this includes ongoing maintenance, including annual testing, training, auditing and data reporting, which has translated to, to an increasing workload for the risk analyst position. In addition, the risk analyst position would spend more time learning about the complex claims processing to provide additional backup to the risk manager. The cost of this request will be offset by savings from the professional and consulting services. Overall, the fiscal year, twenty twenty-one third quarter supplemental budget will increase the budget by three hundred and forty thousand dollars across twelve city funds. The additional appropriations will be supported by miscellaneous revenues, unanticipated beginning fund balances, contingency and the reserves. This supplement, this supplemental will reduce the city reserves by two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. That is the end of the prepared presentation and the recommendation is the approval of the resolution. And with that, we'll hand it over to you and we'll answer any questions. Thank you.
I do have one question going back to the police presentation. Chief McAlpine and/or Sergeant Erickson, can you comment on how the remote triggers work? I guess I understood the Taser part, but you know, there's nothing electronic about a handgun and a holster. So how does the body worn camera remote trigger work on a handgun and a holster?
Certainly, Chief, or Mr. Mayor, there is a addition to the holster that, that we are purchasing. It's an attachment that goes on the inside of the holster. I'm not sure if it works through a magnetic field or light occlusion or something like that. But as the, the firearm is drawn from the holster, it trips that sensor and then it triggers the body worn camera to be turned on.
Okay, thank you. All right. Did other council members have questions on the budget presentation overall? Counselor, Counsel President Lou?
Thank you. To follow up on your question, I have one, I guess, follow-up question for the police request and then another general one. So my follow-up question for the police request, and I will just state that a lot of my questions and the conversations that happen with the Public Safety Advisory Board were very thorough and so a lot of that was addressed there. And I would encourage anyone who wants to, you know, hear more about that to certainly take a look at it. You can find it on the city's YouTube channel or the city's website will take you there. But my question is also regarding, you know, triggering those, those cameras. A lot of situations happen, you know, when you're actively pulling your, you know, the gun or the Taser. But you know, there's a lot of circumstances in which we will want the camera to be on. But you know, there's a lot of circumstances in which we will want the camera to be on, you know, before those are drawn or situations in which they won't be drawn. So can you talk about this, like what it's going to take for those to be turned on? In those circumstances, is that something that's going to have to be done by the officer in that circumstance? So if you could just elaborate a little bit?
Certainly. So the cameras can be turned on manually. It's a simple double tap of a of a large button that's on the front of the camera to turn them on and then they they begin recording. There's also a pre event buffer of video with no audio that occurs that we can set for different timeframes from 30 seconds up to two minutes. So in a situation where an officer is already in an encounter, they can activate it. And we'd have that prevent as well as anything that's recorded after the camera is activated. There's also the policy is is being reviewed and updated. But there's already times in there that if there's a contentious contact or investigating a crime or we detain somebody on what's known as reasonable suspicion of a crime, we have to be recording. There's a statutory requirement that's already in place in Oregon that if the body worn camera is present, they have to be on and recording for those kinds of encounters. So the officers can turn them on whenever they want, but there's going to be certain times that the policy will require them or state law will require them to have those cameras activated and recording.
Thank you for that additional information.
Can I just ask a follow up on that? What I I have seen that whole, you know, not recording audio buffer thing. I do not understand at all, given how much or how little storage space it takes to record audio. Why do they have these set up so they don't record the audio in a buffer too? It just seems like it defies all common sense.
Certainly, so there's a law in Oregon that requires us to notify folks if we are recording them surreptitiously. So if there's no obvious indicator on our on our uniform or on the camera that we're recording, we have to tell somebody that we're recording that's specific to intercepting communication. So as it relates to oral communication, we have to tell somebody that we're recording before we begin recording or at the time that we initiate recording. So if we have a sudden incident where we have to activate that camera, we can't have that 30 seconds or two minutes of audio recording because we didn't notify them that we had recorded that part of the conversation.
So we're going to notify people as we're drawing a gun and like I just don't understand the practical implications of this. We're not warning people. We're not saying, hey, we're going to record you. By the way, put your hand, I mean, like, that's not what's going to happen, right? I just don't understand how the video is, the buffer is different. I understand what you just said, I just don't know how that really applies to the real life situations.
Sure, and I'd have to go back and look at the statute more specifically. There may be an exception in there for emergency situations like where if we have to draw our handgun and point it, you know, that there may be exceptions for that kind of interception of person communications. I don't know. I just know that as it relates to voluntarily recording somebody, we have to notify them that we're recording the conversation.
Okay. Well, it seems like that'll be an issue either way. So I'll be curious to just hear about that. That's not going to change my decision tonight. But okay, Counselor Newton, I think you were next. Oh, sorry, Counsel President Lube, did you have more? Sorry about that.
Yeah, I actually had a question for Mr. King. So, you know, some of the funding is going through contingency and some of it is coming out of reserves. And I'm wondering after given this request, what the balance situation is for the remainder of the year on contingency? And you know, what is going to have the impact on the reserves? And then what was behind the decision or the decision making between which was pulled from which funding source?
So can you repeat the first question on the contingency? Sorry about that.
Yeah, so my question is just regarding the contingency and the reserve for future expenditures. So it's twofold. What is, you know, the impact on those balances for the remainder of this fiscal year? And then what was the methodology and decision making behind which request was being pulled from contingency or from the reserve? If there was just like a general idea of which one was pulled from which?
Thank you. Yes, so there are funds that have contingency. And if we have operating budget, we have contingencies built into the fund. And if we do have the contingency, we use contingency amounts. And if we run out of contingency, then we use the fund balances. So for example, this request contains three property management and the that fund, that fund's contingency was used up. So some of those requests used a fund balance for that those requests. Also, non operating funds, we have to use a fund balance because they don't, we don't have contingency built into that those funds. But overall, we still have 2.2 million citywide contingency in in our budget.
And how is that impacting our reserves? Were we anticipating pulling money from reserves? Because I know, you know, just looking out in the future, eventually, you know, these are dwindling. And so I'm just wondering what the impact on the reserves is.
So we use roughly $254,000 from the reserves. Of that, none of those were general fund. So I would have to go back to the each individual individual funds and see what those are. But other than the Property Management and Facilities Fund, none of the operating funds were using the fund balances. So those were all non operating funds.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Newton?
Two unrelated questions. First of all, thank you for the thorough presentation on the body worn cameras and dash cams. There was an also to echo what Counsel President Lube said. There was an excellent presentation and a really robust conversation at the Public Safety Advisory Board. And I imagine some of those folks are listening tonight. The question I have on that though is there was a great deal of support for the technology, but also a great deal of interest in being involved in reviewing and at least and, you know, sort of commenting on the policies, which you alluded to when you responded to Counselor, Counsel President Lube. My understanding, and just correct me if I'm wrong, and maybe the chief can weigh in here, is that there'll be an opportunity at the Public Safety Advisory Board to consider those policies before the tools are actually in place and operational, because I think we're looking at June or July. So I just wanted to get quick clarification on that. And then I have one more very unrelated question. Thanks.
Counselor Newton, you're absolutely correct. This this would, the the policy, the expanded policy is now in draft form. It's going through the chain of command. And also to have the union take a look at that to see if there is any impacts that way. Once I see it and accept it, as promised, I will then present it to the Public Safety Advisory Board for their review. And we intend to do stop whatever's on the schedule to be able to have them review that and ask their questions, vet it out or provide input before we actually make this an official policy.
Thank you, I know they'll appreciate that very much. The la, the second question I have, it's not a dollar, a large dollar amount, but it relates to the Public Works request for PTO buyout due to additional staff work due to the COVID-19. And my question is, are we going to have this? Again, it's not a large dollar amount, but are we going to have this in other departments? Or is it just Public Works that's been hit with this? I just was wondering, and I'm hoping we're managing that better as we move forward. I know COVID-19 was a unique situation, but I know we tried to avoid challenges with that. We've tried to avoid challenges that with that in the past. So I'm just curious about that. That's all, thanks.
So far, the the request for PTO buyouts, additional requests were only Public Works. Public Works Administration Division has two positions that are heavily involved in the COVID-19 response. So other than that, we do not anticipate requesting additional PTO buyout for the supplemental budget.
Thanks.
All right, Counselor Goodhouse?
Yes, I have a few questions. Counsel President Lube kind of addressed my first one. I was just wondering, looking at the reserves and contingency and the extra 254,000, just how that how that plays into the overall budget? If we're looking at a timeframe cliff of having a short timeframe until we start having to cut services, if this is going to cut services or if it's already in there? And and by taking from the reserve, is that just the reserve amounts we have? Or that's that's not tapping into the emergency reserve, is it?
No, this will be, the funds that we were using, the reserves were fleet and property management and transient lodging tax. And other than that, none of the funds were using fund balances.
Okay. And then I just had a couple other ones. One, and maybe I might have missed it. When we formed the PSAB, did we know at that time that we were going to have to pay for a service or pay for that? I know that usually we have our boards and committees and so forth, but I don't remember when we when we created that, that there was going to be association of a fee for that or the service for them as opposed to using a staff member.
I can, I can start with that. I know I'm not the staff person to respond to it, but the, I know that the city manager at the time and assistant city manager and the staff involved in sort of planning that did warn us that there were going to be, you know, needs, including an additional management analyst, I think, position, or that was part of the rationale for the additional management analyst. So I I don't know that there was a, it's going to cost us this exact thousands of dollars, but there was a recognition that it was not going to be free. I don't know if staff want to provide more of a response, but that would be the beginning of my response to that.
Any representatives from city management?
Can't hear you.
Could the?
Yep.
There you go.
Assistant City Manager Kathy Nylund, I can respond to that. Because of how the Public Safety Advisory Board evolved, we knew from the onset that it was going to be really unique and different than other boards and commissions. So internal capacity was was an issue, which is why we did ask for a management analyst position to staff it along with other initiatives. And we also knew that facilitation was going to be needed because of the topic at hand being really sensitive with the environment and the topics that were up for discussion. So having that outside facilitator was an added component. We didn't know cost at the time, but we knew there was a need.
Okay. And then, and there are question on the DLR extension. Was that just with the scope of that work, was that extra work compared to we we approved back in February? Or what was the cause for the additional cost compared to back in February when we approved it?
Yeah, so when you approved it, it did not actually set aside appropriations. Then this is the process to go through, set aside appropriations, the contract extension.
Okay. That's it for right now.
Counselor Shaw?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to follow up on a few questions and quite a few were already answered that I had. The management analyst position, was that, did that end up getting funded for PSAB? I know there is the 60,000 for the facilitation service, but I just wondering if the management analyst position. Thank you, Kathy. I thought I might see you.
It's me again. So we did indeed, that was budgeted, the management analyst, and it's Eduardo Ramos, who is staffing it and part of the team and is working on other initiatives as well. So we are very thankful and he's been a great addition and provides a lot of capacity and knowledge for, I'm going to do this for chief, for the PSAB.
And that was assistant city manager Nylund, that was done, but I mean, Counselor Shaw may have not been, I don't think she was on the council when that was approved, right? That was done in the fall, if I'm remembering.
Yeah, correct. That was, yeah, just around, he was a management analyst.
So that, yeah, it was before my time, but I just didn't realize he was the management analyst. So he's been doing a fantastic job on PSAB. And also just want to thank the chief for all the work that she and her staff had done with regards to the body cams, the research and to look forward to that going back to the PSAB. But fantastic work. I think it's going to be vital, given the situation that's happening across the United States that unfortunately we've seen the last couple of weeks. So thank you.
Okay. Any further questions before we move on to public testimony? Mr. Nullup, do we have any callers in the queue?
Mr. Mayor, no callers in the queue.
City Recorder Craig, were there any written comments? I don't believe so, but I want to verify.
No, we received no written comment.
All right, I will close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we did get the written recommendation from the Public Safety Advisory Board that came through today. So I don't know if that counts as testimony, but.
Yeah, we did. I I took that as part of the staff information, but we could consider it testimony as well.
Thank you.
All right, I will close the public hearing. Counsel, discussion and consideration of resolution number 21-12. And there are staff present for every department if there are questions about the supplemental. And this is specifically on the budget supplemental. The award of a contract for body worn cameras, I think, is the is the next item on the agenda. It looks like there is a separate staff report for that. Hopefully that's brief after the discussion we just had. But counsel, discussion and consideration.
I move to approve resolution number 21-12.
I'll second.
It's been moved in second and city recorder, please read the number and title of the resolution.
Resolution number 21-12, a resolution to adopt the fiscal year 2021 third quarter budget supplemental, including budget adjustments to Public Works Policy and Administration and Community Services.
And city recorder, roll call though.
Counsel President Lube?
Yes.
Counselor Shaw?
Yes.
Mayor Snyder?
Yes.
Counselor Goodhouse?
Yes.
Counselor Newton?
Yes.
All right, resolution number 21-12 is adopted unanimously. Thank you, staff in all 12 of those departments that are, were here and prepared and involved. Thank you for your work. And Contracts and Purchasing Manager Moody, are you ready to move on to the local contract review board? Consider contract award for body worn cameras, fleet cameras, tasers, interview recording platform, digital evidence, storage and maintenance and support.
Good evening, Mayor Schneider and counselors. Christine Moody, purchasing manager. I will make this short. We are here tonight asking for your approval to award a contract to Axon Enterprises for the purchase, maintenance and support of body worn cameras, fleet cameras, tasers and interview recording platform and digital evidence storage. This will be a five year contract at a cost of $1,467,765. The city explored options for soliciting an enterprise system and found that Axon Enterprise holds a national cooperative contract through Sourcewell, a government service cooperative organization in which the city is a member. Under our public contracting rules, we are allowed to utilize cooperative contracts in order to obtain best pricing. As you've already heard the presentation by the police department on their needs, I will turn this back over to counsel if you have any questions about the contracting process.
All right, questions on the contract or contracting process for all of this or a motion?
I move to approve a contract award for body worn cameras, fleet cameras, tasers, interview. interview recording platform, digital evidence storage, maintenance, and support.
I'll second.
I second that.
All right. It's been moved in second. And City Recorder, please conduct a roll call vote.
Counsel President Lou?
Yes.
Counselor Shaw?
Yes.
Mayor Snyder?
Yes.
Counselor Goodhouse?
Yes.
Counselor Newton?
Yes.
All right. The motion's adopted unanimously. Thank you very much. And we had no non-agenda items. City Manager Reimer, administrative report.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Good evening again, Mayor and counselors, and my teammates that are on the call, as well as any community members. Just first, thanks to everyone that's been involved in tonight's meeting. I think it was a very successful meeting, hearing from our community partners, as well as the items that were brought before you and the dialogue that the council had. So thanks to all of you, as well as our teammates that have supported this effort tonight. I also want to start by thanking a critical piece of our first responder team. It is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. And so, as you know, we, our services are provided regionally. And it's great to know that we have vital partners like that within the region that helps our TIGER, as well as all the surrounding agencies in our first responders' response. And so the information that they provide, our fire and police teammates, is critical for all of them as they arrive on scenes. And so just thank you once again, and happy Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. That's a lot of words to say at one time, so I think I'm getting it right. Kudos to them. Also, a big kudos to all of you, our communications team and community members, Mayor, for your efforts in the state of the city last week. It was a great event. And we just want to share some stats as well as some feedback we received from the community. First, we had 343 community members that pre-registered for our world premiere of the State of the City. And I know people enjoyed that. We have, we've had around 1,000 views on YouTube and Facebook of the event. And so another great way of spreading the word. And we'll continue to play it on our TV, CTV for the next several weeks. And I want to read some of the comments. I think this first one is very complimentary because this is the person's birthday. "We attended last night. It was my husband's birthday, so we watched as we enjoyed a birthday dinner. Finally understands why I enjoy going to the TIGER at night bashes since we moved to TIGER. My daughter also enjoyed it. It was an awesome evening." Another one, "The late night in TIGER is outstanding. I'm really surprised and delighted by this fun and current way of delivering the city's message. I would not be surprised if other cities, they give you the best form of flattery, which is imitation. Nice job on late night. Awesome. Thank you again, TIGER, for everything. And finally, great program. Proud of our city." And so I think it came across quite well, as you can see, these comments as well as others that were received. So I just thank you to all of you. Thank you to Kent, and thank you to many others that have been involved in putting that together. As you can tell, this unique approach to the state of the city really resonates with our residents. And so kudos to all of you. Couple other quick updates is, as you know, we are going to be expanding our library in-person services on April 26th, so just two short weeks away. And next week, we're going to go through a process to test our system, to test our safety measures that we have in place. And all of you can help us. And so Mayor and counselors, you're invited to our soft opening, which will be next week, our soft launch on Tuesday, the 20th, and Thursday, the 22nd, from 10:00 to 11:30. We're inviting individuals in like yourselves and others to come in, experience the library, work with our team as we can to make sure that we have the most, our safety measures and the experience for our community is as great as possible as we open the doors formally the next week. So if you're interested, feel free to reach out to Halston, the team, or show up during those hours. Couple other things to inform you about. Last night's TIGER-Twolton School Board meeting, the SRO contract was approved by the school board unanimously. I want to thank the chief and our team for working with, with their team so closely and making sure that the contract really reflects the services that we believe the community deserves and that both organizations worked in partnership and in collaboration to create. The chief and team are now working on the SROs, who will start there next Monday on the 19th. And we'll soon be selecting our levy-supported SRO officers as well, who will start in the fall. So once again, the community's funds are at work at the, in the SRO level, SRO level. Last night at the Public Safety Advisory Board, the team met to discuss our hiring practices within our police department. I want to thank our human resources business partner, Brandy, as well as Lieutenant Charlton, who presented our practices within the police department and really finding ways to hire officers who reflect our community, as well as making sure that we have a very inclusive hiring practice. And it's my understanding that the board will continue this conversation at their meeting on April 26th. So once again, a very important part of who we are as an organization, who we are as a police department. And I want to thank the Public Safety Advisory Board, as well as our HR team for working together to make sure that we really do have an inclusive process. And just a reminder that on Saturday, April 24th, will be our first budget committee meeting. And so we are in the process of finalizing the agenda and the presentation materials, and we should be getting those to you in the budget committee shortly. And since we have a reputation as a very dog-friendly community, which is a great thing to be recognized for, I'll conclude my comments by recognizing all of our family members with a belated Happy National Pets Day, which was on Sunday, April 11th. And that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Reimer. Just making one final note here. All right. So that concludes administrative report. We have no executive session scheduled. Is there a motion for adjournment?
I move to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved in second. And City Recorder, roll call vote, please.
Counsel President Lou?
Yes.
Counselor Shaw?
Yes.
Mayor Snyder?
Yes.
Counselor Goodhouse?
Yes.
Counselor Newton?
Yes.
All right, we are adjourned. Good night, TIGER.
Night, TIGER.